Okay, we are live.
All right. Uh, I call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Uh, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Present.
Mayor, uh, Pro Tim Harvey?
Yeah.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Weir? Councilmember Wallace? Councilmember Deja Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Kupa?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum. Uh, moving on to the plays of allegiance. Councilmember Deja Hill, would you lead us in the plays of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
All right, I appreciate that. Now, moving on to our proclamations, uh, we have five proclamations for this month, and the first one reads as follows for the National Crime Victims Rights Rights Week from April eighteenth to the twenty-fourth. And it says, whereas crime victims' rights act passed here in Texas and at the federal level have provided victims with ways to participate meaningfully throughout the criminal justice process. And whereas the rights of crime victims as most preserved are most preserved when all participants in the criminal justice process, not only victims are adequately educated about victims' rights. And whereas advocacy by and for victims of crime is itself a form of seeking justice and is no less than justice thought in the courts. And whereas the respecting victims' decision is honoring their right and ability to take control of their lives and allowing them to find autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defined goals. And whereas providing culturally responsive and linguistically accessible responses ensures that victims of crime with diverse backgrounds receive appropriate resources while finding meaningful ways to pave their road towards healing and justice. And whereas the accomplishment of the victims' rights movement inspires in us hope for future progress, greater healing, and bigger opportunities. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all the victims of crime. And whereas the city of Manor is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim service providers, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April eighteen through twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, as Crime Victims Week. And reaffirming this, the City of Manor's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Manor. And if we were present, I would give this proclamation to our chief, who is the head of our, uh, Public Safety Committee. Now, moving on to the next one is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas child abuse and neglect are a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions require input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the City of Manor, Texas. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and development well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote, to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In the City of Manor, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Manor to be affixed this seventh day of April twenty-twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Manor. And if we were present, I would, uh, be handing this proclamation to our, uh, to Councilwoman Anna Weir, who's heading our healthcare task force. Next up is the Month of the Military Child. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas military youth of today and tomorrow promise to be among the most active and involved populations in our nation's history. And whereas the physical, social, and emotional well-being of children in military families is essential to their success and has a direct impact on the resiliency of military families serving our country. And whereas by ensuring military children are safe and supported in our schools and communities, our men and women in uniform can focus on the challenges and missions they face in the line of duty. And whereas our efforts and support can improve the lives of military youth and help pave the way for future generations. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and hereby, on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-one as Military Child Month. In the City of Manor, Texas, and urge all citizens to take time to honor our military youth and the family members who care for them. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Manor to be affixed this seventh day of April twenty-twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Manor. And for this proclamation, it would go to Councilwoman Emily Hill, who is our lead for military efforts for this city. Next up is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. And whereas sexual harassment, assault, and abuse happen in all communities, and that includes online spaces, we are spending more and more of our lives online, whether that's for work, school, or entertainment. Unfortunately, with this increase in virtual connection comes an increase in online abuse and harassment. Consent and boundaries can be violated online in a number of ways. And the trauma of online abuse is all too real for many survivors. And whereas this year, the Sexual Assault Awareness Month is celebrating its twentieth anniversary. The theme for this year's campaign is "We Can Build Safe Online Spaces." The campaign calls on us to create online spaces that are built on the foundational values of practicing consent, keeping kids safe, and supporting survivors. And whereas, and whereas City of Manor strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-one as Sexual Awareness, uh, Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Manor, Texas, and urge all citizens to learn about sexual assault and commit themselves to the community goal of ensuring that everyone can live their life free of sexual violence. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Manor on this seventh day, April twenty-twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Mayor. And this would also go to Councilwoman Anna Weir, who spearheads our healthcare task force. And the last proclamation is Autism Awareness. The proclamation reads as, whereas each year, people across the globe take time to recognize the millions of people living with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas the autism spectrum, spectrum disorder represents a broad group of disorders that vary widely from mild to severe, and is characterized by difficulty with social interaction, communication, severely limited interests, and repetitive behaviors. And whereas the lifelong nature of ASD and other developmental disabilities require a variety of types of assistance at different points in individuals' life. And whereas a variety of public and private organizations and agencies strive to provide quality care, support, or services to children and adults with ASD to enable them to live as independently as possible and to reach their full potential. And whereas each organization has a role in identifying, assessing, or supporting people with ASD and their families. And whereas City of Manor continues awareness efforts in order to educate professionals, students, and community members about autism and best practices in education in educating individuals with autism. Now therefore I, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor of the City of Manor, Texas, and on behalf of the Manor City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-one as Autism Awareness Month. And the City of Manor encourages all citizens to become educated and informed about programs, services, and opportunities to support individuals with autism. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Manor on this seventh day of April twenty-twenty-one. Signed, Dr. Larry Wallace, Jr., Mayor, City of Manor. And most of you all think I'm probably gonna say I would give this to, uh, Councilwoman Anna Weir, since it's probably related to health, but I would actually be giving it to Councilwoman Emily Hill, who is the chair of the Education Committee, because we are talking about informing and providing information to the community more than just health services. So with that being said, uh, I now go to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Do not.
All right, then we go to the consent agenda. Uh, all the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by myself or a fellow council member, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh, we have on the agenda is just consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the City Council minutes of the March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one City Council regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the City Council minutes of March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, regular meeting.
All right, it's been properly motioned. I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Uh, second goes to Councilman Kupa. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none? All those, oh, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the regular agenda, that motion passed. So next agenda item is, uh, we wanted to, agenda item number two, uh, do I have a motion to postpone this agenda item until the next, uh, stated city council meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this, uh, agenda item uh, to the next city council meeting per the recommendation of Scott Dunlap, Associate Development Services Director.
All right, then probably motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none? Roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kupa?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number three. Acknowledge the resignation of Planning and Zoning Commissioner Ruben Cardona, place number five, and declare a vacancy. I think this one's kind of self-explanatory. I appreciate Commissioner Cardona's, uh, service to the city um, and hope that he is, uh, you know, gonna have a great, uh, experience with, with the job and the additional demands that it's requiring of him. Do I have a motion to, uh, accept the resignation and declare a vacancy?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation and declare a vacancy for Commissioner Place Five on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It has been so motioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right.
And probably seconded by Councilman Kupa. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none? Roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Wallace?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Kupa?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to executive session. City Council will now convene into executive session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, Texas Government Code, and Section one-point-zero-five, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct to consult with legal counsel to discuss City of Manor Code of ordinances regarding portable buildings. I will see you all on the other side.
Okay, everybody, I am gonna be moving you over to the breakout room. I'm sure all of you are kind of getting used to it by now. Just remember that, uh, you will need to, uh, leave the room once you're done to come back to the main meeting. Scott, did you need to go in there as well?
Veronica and Tom also.
Okay.
All right, one, two, three. Four, five, six, all right. We missing gene, missing genes. All right. I'll get him about another minute. Is he okay at the time of things expanded? Okay, got it. All right, uh, city council will now reconvene into open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one. Texas government code and take action if any on items discussed during closed executive session. There are no items to, uh, take action on. Therefore, I call this meeting adjourned at eight oh eight P M. You all have a good one.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Mayor, just want to let you know I'm not gonna be able to make the special meeting. I'll be working, uh, at that time and there's no way I can get out of it.
Okay, understood.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.